Wow, they're for us, but yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. Is there any correspondence?
No.
Do we need visitor comments tonight? And if you'll just state your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Ted Stager at 35 Warwick Street. And I'm here tonight to talk about the casino issue, which, you know, as you know, there's possibly the casino, there may be a casino in Springfield within a matter of years. And this is the time when the decision-making process is ongoing. And so I'm here for a few reasons, but one of them is to encourage you, you all, to research and do some homework as far as how a casino might impact what you do. My wife has spoken to people in Connecticut nearby Foxwoods, and she was surprised at the impacts that she wasn't really expecting. You know, among the things, but certainly not limited to, are decreased property values, which would decrease potential budgets, increased class sizes, increased need for ESOL instruction, along with public safety issues related to having more people flowing through town, as well as increased drunk driving. So the first thing, like I said, is for, I would encourage you all to research, talk to your peers in other communities near casinos, and superintendent, to talk to other superintendents, to, you know, just gather that information. Number two, if you come to the same conclusion that we have, that this is a very bad idea for our town and for our students and for our community, as well as greater Springfield, would encourage you to draft a letter to the Mass Gaming Commission. We've been in contact with the Select Board. We've placed a citizen petition on the ballot for the Fall Town Meeting, so would encourage you to vote with us on that. Thirdly, I wanted to make a plea to the parents that might be watching tonight. I know some of you may be parents as well. You know, I grew up in town. I did not have Mr. Fitzgerald as a teacher, but you were in the department. I went to school with Ms. Bone. And I have a son who has not yet attended the Long River Public Schools, but he's still smart enough to know that a casino is a bad idea for the town. I had the privilege of being able to ride my bike up and down sidewalks in Long Meadow Street and so on. The fact that the casinos will be allowed to serve free liquor from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. daily, every day, means that Route 5 would become, you know, a dangerous place. I would not know if I let him ride his bike to center of school on Route 5. Also, parents of driving-age kids, you know, to have, there's a documented increase in drunk drivers as a result of a casino. So it just worries me, and I think it's just something that we need to take seriously right now, because this is the time when we have a chance to act. So I'd encourage you to go to the website, nocasinospringfield.com. There's a video there. There's a link to a study that's very well done about some of the potential impacts. And I look forward to hearing the results, and if you have any concern, feel free to let us know. There's contact information on the website. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Certainly an important topic for the town to consider. Move on to school committee comments. John?
First of all, I'd like to thank the gentleman for coming tonight. And I, for one, would like to go on record as sharing your view. And I'm just wondering if it would not be in order for us to make a statement as a committee to add to the concern of a large number of people in this community about the impact of casinos on our lifestyle and our community. It's certainly not the kind of values that we're trying to transmit to students in our schools. And that's, you know, the whole idea that you can make a lot of money without any work, and that gambling is a way of life. That's not at all on our agenda. So maybe we could do this at another meeting since we're not prepared for a debate tonight.
Sure.
But I would just like to let everyone know I'm interested in sponsoring a resolution to that effect. And we can have a debate and discuss it and vote it up or down.
Yeah, John, it's an issue before the town, and I don't think it's inappropriate for this committee to take a position on an issue before the town that specifically could impact the department and the district. Obviously, I would love to gather some more information, especially from districts that exist near casinos, you know, before I make my opinion. But certainly, you know, I think it probably is incumbent on us, incumbent upon us to make a decision or at least form some sort of opinion that is, you know, with regard to that and its impact on the district.
Well, the town will be voting on, at our November fall meeting.
Yes.
So our next meeting is quite appropriate time to provide an informed debate on it.
I think, John, I'm not sure about the details, but I believe the Select Board has formed a casino subcommittee. Bad name, but I think fundamentally a subcommittee to look at the impacts of casino, excuse me, and provide that information back to whoever it goes to, actually. I'm not too sure who that would be. So maybe I would actually welcome the debate. I think it's worthwhile to have that conversation. But our feedback probably would go back to that subcommittee, I think, to go then provide it a bigger voice for the town. I'm not sure about the process, but it would make sense to me to do it that way.
Well, yeah, well, if we pass a resolution on this topic, we could release it to the press, but certainly release it to the Select Board Subcommittee.
Right.
And, you know, that's basically what we can do when you make a resolution. You know, you make a statement and send it out.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's entirely appropriate, given that the context of our resolution be with regard to the impact on education. So. Any other school committee comments? John?
Yes, I have another one. This is in the shape of a reminder that Long Meadow Excellence in Education Foundation is sponsoring its annual gala on the 2nd of November down at the Basketball Hall of Fame. And tickets are still available. And we're interested in drumming up as much support for this very valuable educational assist. So buy your leaf tickets now. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have a couple of announcements. First and foremost, this is a big week for all of us, I think. Beginning Thursday night, we'll be having a reception for the neighbors of the high school to say thank you for dealing with all of the dust and debris and the vibrations and, you know, the heavy machinery over the last three or four years. Friday at 11:45, we'll be inviting seniors, senior citizens to the school to enjoy a musical performance and a luncheon as our way of saying thank you for their continued support. And of course, on Saturday, beginning at 1:00, we will be hosting our dedication ceremony right in front of the school. The building will be open at 10:00 a.m. for an open house. At 1:00, we will hold the ceremony featuring speakers like myself and Superintendent Doyle, but also State Representative Brian Ash and MSBA Executive Director Jack McCarthy, followed by another open house. We obviously, as everybody's gotten an alert now or gotten a Blackboard Connect message or an invitation, we would love to see the entire community there. This is a really special day. It's a very exciting day for Long Meadow, and we are, you know, so grateful for this building and so excited to share it with the community. So we hope to see everybody there. That's pretty much my only announcement. And I'll echo John's leaf comment because, no? No, I will echo it. So, all right, moving right along, old business, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I've been obviously corresponding with Marie Angelides, who's the chairwoman of the Select Board for the last several months since she became chair. And I put on old business just some joint projects that we talked about at our last joint meeting. The first of which is the Wounded Warrior 5K, which is on November 14th at, I believe, 9:00 a.m., 8:00 a.m.? I'll get specific about that. You know, Marie had asked if we can assign a point person. I told her that I would probably be the best point person for getting information out to the board. But, you know, I think this is probably one of those areas where we have, you know, a pretty good opportunity to, you know, do something as a collabora-, you know, as a collaboration and something that's pretty good for the community. And so, you know, I know I sent a letter out or a note out to the committee asking, you know, who wanted to kind of help volunteer as part of this, and I'm looking for, I know Kim said she would do it. Is anybody else interested in kind of helping out and being like a point person for the Wounded Warrior 5K? Okay, very good. John?
I'm interested. What does this entail?
I've been, well, I think right now it's just going to basically be disseminating information, you know, and being part of the information chain. I know that I've spoken with Jamie DeBurne from Key Club about seeing if we can get some help from students, but obviously Key Club gets asked to do about a million things. And I know Joseph's on Key Club.
I'm actually working with Slightly.
Okay.
Very involved with Angelides, so I would be happy to
Okay, great.
to help get information to the board.
Perfect. And, you know, I think that we obviously need to work with the administration to see what type of information we can get out to, you know, students or to the school community, even if it's just as simple as sending an alert now message, you know, and obviously you and I can work on that offline.
Well, one idea I have is we could advertise it in schools. I mean, they're looking for walkers and runners, I believe. So that's an alternative activity for a Saturday morning, is that it?
I think it is a Saturday morning, right? Yeah.
Pardon me?
I believe so, yes.
I think if we talk to Mr. Cavatasto, he's the athletic director, I think he would be more than happy to help us get some athletes to volunteer.
The whole idea, of course, is that it is voluntary. There's a lot of very good causes out there.
Right.
And a lot of demands on our time, but
Right.
I'll be glad to support it.
Okay. You know, and that, and just, you know, for the record, that is something I expressed to Marie was that we do have a lot of demands on our time as a school committee, but this is, this is an area where I feel like we can kind of get together on this. The other thing is that she had sent out a doodle poll that I resent out to everybody earlier in the week regarding our next joint meeting. And I've been very, you know, and I've been very honest with Marie that we are very open to meeting and collaborating. And I think it's one of the biggest criticisms that we have, you know, laid on the Select Board in past years is an unwillingness to collaborate and work with us. And so certainly, we don't want to be the board that says, you know, we're not going to collaborate. But I've been very specific that, you know, any joint meeting we have needs, and, you know, to really, just to kind of sound like Jim on this, needs to have a purpose and an objective and an outcome. And so, you know, I have been pushing back with some of the items that have been brought forward. And I hope that, you know, it doesn't appear as though we're doing it to be arbitrary. We're doing it because, like John said, we have a lot of demands on our time. We have, you know, the business of this department and this, you know, and the district to worry about. You know, and so anything that we are going to meet jointly on, I think, needs to have a productive outcome. And so I'm kind of interested. And so, you know, the next meeting, and I'm not sure of the date yet because I haven't checked the doodle poll or spoken with Marie since last week, is to talk about, or at least give our input on a potential budget directive. And so I'm kind of, you know, curious to hear the board's thoughts on how we continue to approach these joint meetings. Jim?
Well, because you were speaking for me, I guess the
I'm trying to sound like you.
I sent a couple notes out anyway to folks, but any meeting to be productive needs a clear objective, a process, and the data you're going to bring to it. I mean, to go in on the budget directive as an example and just say, okay, we want, and I'm making things up, right, so whoever's listening, I'm making things up. We want a zero-based budget without discussions of data and how to deal with that is not fruitful, because you'll just point fingers at each other and argue and not get anywhere. The town has competing interests. The school has a lot of needs. The town has a lot of needs. And there ought to be, in that subject matter, an objective that says, is the objective to understand a budget directive? Is the objective to create a budget directive? How is it going to deal with the contractual commitments at hand, as well as the town needs? And if we can't create a framework for the meeting, I would just envision that people will come in without data and argue with each other.
And they'll kind of devolve into the normal.
And we'll leave where we were left unfortunate last year with, okay, we're going to go to the town and argue in front of the town, which I don't think is the right thing to do. But I'm a very strong advocate of process for meetings, and we ought to follow it. And that's kind of my point. We ought to be, we ought to hold firm and make sure that the leadership, yourself and Marie and whoever else you want to involve, creates a process for the meeting.
Thank you. John?
I share Jim's concerns there, especially in lieu of our experience last year. I'd like to just point out to the committee and to the audience that the school committee has a vision statement. They also have a mission statement. And the Select Board of the town of Long Meadow has neither. So it's pretty much the whim of people who attend their meetings. And I would also remind members of this board that we had a meeting prior to town meeting last year when an agreement was reached at that meeting. And when it came back to be voted on by both boards, the Select Board refused to support what their delegates to the meeting actually said. So I support what Jim is saying. If we're going to have a meeting, let's not do it to just do kumbaya statements. Let's get serious. And a zero-based budget is not serious in the light of the world we're living in. So that's all I have to say.
Well, anybody else? All right, so I mean, you know, the message I think that I'll deliver back to Marie is pretty consistent with the message that I've already given her, which, you know, is that we, you know, we foster collaboration between boards, and we, you know, we're obviously eager to meet and to come to some resolution. And I think, you know, I kind of speak for everybody when I say that I'm incredibly interested and kind of excited at the opportunity that we have, you know, to be able to actually have some impact on the directive for once. Whether that actually, you know, goes, whether that actually happens or not is another thing entirely. But, you know, that we need to set clear objectives and that we're not, you know, necessarily in, you know, willing to meet on arbitrary items, but very specific items that are, you know, to our interest as a board and as a district. So I appreciate your input on that.
Just, I welcome, I'll help create that for anybody who'd like. I mean
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
The more you help, the more a meeting is focused with data and what the clear objective is besides a general objective, the more likelihood you have of meeting in the middle and creating something you can all support.
I appreciate that. All right, so moving right along, superintendent's report.
The first order of priority was the dedication ceremony, as well as the other events that will precede it. So I think, Michael, you've explained that. We just hope that everyone in the community feels free to come. We have receptions planned. We have tours with students coming to show you the facilities. So we welcome everybody to come. Again, that's the resident dinner at 5:30 on Thursday. It's the senior citizen concert and luncheon on Friday at 11:45, and you should meet in the auditorium. And then the dedication ceremony is at 1:00 p.m. on Saturday.
Marie, can I interrupt you for one second? Or actually, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I had a question from at least one senior about where they should be parking on Friday.
Larry, they should come right up to the front.
Okay.
We're blocking off several, a whole row of parking spaces up front for our seniors.
Okay, great. Good information to know.
Yes. Next, the technology committee met last week. We had a wonderful meeting. There were 20 administrators, teachers. We had a school committee parent rep. Janet, thank you for coming, where we discussed technology. We're really looking at one-to-one for the high school, and I'm going to talk to Larry about actually implementing that the second half of the year. We again reviewed that it's not feasible for the little ones right now to be asked to bring computers to school for a variety of reasons, including they might get lost or stolen or broken. So I put on my report a list of things that we had talked about before that came out of those meetings, because as we continue our technology communication, it's going to come to the point where some of these will have budget implications. So I'd like those in the back of your mind, that this is something we're thinking about, particularly as we move to electronic textbooks. Another piece of the report is we took the data to share with the committee where I broke it down, how many students versus how many computers to get the ratio of children to computer. You can see that Center has 2.75 children per computer. Blueberry is 3.76 children per computer. Wolf Swamp, 1.79 children per computer. Williams, 1.82 children per computer. Glenbrook, 2.0 children per computer. And the high school will be moving one-to-one. There is a little bit of a discrepancy because Blueberry has larger enrollment than the other schools. And when we've been doling out the equipment, we've done that equitably among the schools. We also need to look at PTOs to see how much PTO is given, as well as LEAF. So Blueberry's been encouraged to apply for grants to LEAF to see if they can help lower that ratio of Blueberry Middle School. We'll be meeting again with the technology committee in December.
Can I move some of the things from the high school down into the elementary schools when we do one-to-one, or will it be?
We probably can, but I think we need to get it off the ground before we commit to doing that. But that was talked about with all of the meetings, that some of the equipment can be redistributed as we implement the one-to-one. Jim?
Given the disparity in the ratios, do you, or have the principals seen any difference in your ability to teach or utilize the computers in an educational forum? I mean, we're doing this for, you know, educational improvement, right? It's been our discussion many times. And so with Blueberry being, you know, not quite twice the ratio of the others, but higher, has there been an impact in the ability or inability, depending on which way you look at that, of teachers that teach certain subjects utilizing computers or that type of thing? If not, then I think we ought to question why not? Because, you know, with a ratio of twice the others, you would think that there would be some impact somewhere.
I think the impact is teachers are more reluctant to plan a whole unit around technology. Because if you plan and you can't get the computers, then it leaves you stuck with your integration of the technology into the unit. We do see that now that we have increased the number of machines in the lower grades, we're really seeing them used all the time at the other schools. People tell you before, the problem was not having access to the equipment, and that's why they weren't using it. Now they're doing that, and now we're seeing actual units designed around curriculum and instruction where technology is a part of that, rather than just having a class that where they're looking at something on the computer. So I do think that Blueberry is probably impacted in that they're nervous about planning because they can't have as much access to the computers as the other schools do.
Is there a way you could actually ask? Could you ask about that?
Sure.
Because I'm interested in that perspective, as well as when you mentioned Japan, if I read your notes properly, they don't use a lot of technology in the classroom.
That's right.
Right? So I know here in the U.S. anyway, there's a huge push for PCs and technology in a classroom. And yet, Japanese education is equal to, anyway, better than, but equal to that in the U.S. And so if they don't use this technology, I'm very curious as to the impact when we have this type of ratio. The other thing is if we believe that there's an impact, I think what we could consider is, excuse me, Katie brought up moving, you know, stuff from the high school, but maybe you move things and equalize throughout the middle schools and elementary schools by moving units around based around population, student population, more than anything else. You know, we can look at that as well.
We can look at that. One of the problems would be the PTOs, and LEAF has given grants for specific schools. The high school, that's a different story, but careful. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. But we can look at that, Jim, because what the district has purchased, we would have the ability to move, but what the district has not purchased, we don't have the right to move it. So, Kim, are you going to say something?
I was just going to, when you were asking about Blueberry, I know, for instance, my son's teacher actually said something to me about how she hasn't done certain things because she can't get the computers to do what she was trying to do. So that's one out of
Yeah, no, that's fair. That's fair. You know, not to belabor this, I still question, although I'm a technology person at heart, just based on my background, but I do question how much of an impact technology has in the classroom as far as the ability to teach or improve teaching, not just teach, but. classroom, as far as the ability to teach or improve teaching, not just teach, but. And so when you have this difference in ratios, it ought to be telling us something. And if there's, it's the wrong word, I can't think of a better word. So I'm gonna say politics out of it, it's not politics, but the perspective of if people, if a PTO bought something for, let's say Wolf Swamp versus Blueberry, but there's an inequality within what we're doing for our students within the town, somehow we've got to figure out how to address that. I mean, it's not fair, in my opinion only, not the board, to say, hey, I'm allowed to be in Wolf Swamp, let's say, with 1.79 children per computer, and I'm getting maybe a better education on the computers, not necessarily better education, but if I'm in Blueberry, I'm not. It shouldn't be.
Exactly.
Different within the town. It shouldn't be.
I agree.
It's my own opinion.
I agree with that as well.
So I'm not too sure how to fix it, so I can always pontificate right now, but we gotta.
No, it's a good.
We gotta think about what to do about it, if I could.
It's not really directly relevant to what you're reporting. But how did we let the size, the student population of Blueberry swell to 471? Shouldn't we have redistributed? Now, I know that's a very ticklish problem.
Very.
And some people get hyper over it, but it's the root of this problem, isn't it? We've got more students in Blueberry and fewer computers. And it's probably just drawn out of that, I'm guessing, as a minor league social scientist.
Well, I think one of the things that you have is some principals have really pushed for the technology too. You can tell that by the number of LEAF grants. Some schools have a sufficient number of grants that have actually been put in and allocated, because some principals have pushed, or certain staff members have a real passion for it.
Right. But at the same time, we're not being feared to the children when we crowd one school with students. I mean, that, Blueberry has a very large student population. I know we added a teacher over there to this.
They have a classroom for every child, they have an assistant principal, the other two schools don't have that, so that there are supports in there to make sure that it's equitable. I think this is a case of maybe not, I think the mistake was in giving equitable distribution of new technology.
Marie, I got a question for you.
Uh huh.
Is this, when you say that you have 150 computers in a building, are these like actual laptops, or are these laptops and iPads and whatever we're considering a computing device?
For example, Williams has a significant number of chromes.
Right.
Which the Glenbrook's going to start to pick up some of the chromes, because they've proven to be successful and far less expensive.
Right.
Most of the time, I'm talking about iPads and laptops.
All right. That's interesting. Kim?
Just something on, Marie, when you mentioned that some of the schools are more apt to ask for the computer technology, and some of the teachers are more apt to use them, would some of those teachers be willing to kind of share their expertise or knowledge with other schools within the district, so that we can maybe bring them all, like some tricks and tips maybe that they're using in their classroom, so that some of those other schools that maybe aren't so technology, you know, up with the technology, so that maybe, you know, say if there's a first grade, I don't know anything, just saying, but if there, for instance, if there were like a first grade teacher in Wolf Swamp that's doing something great on the iPad, and, you know, maybe she could share it with the other first grade classes, the other schools, so that maybe they could all be doing something similar? I don't know.
The elementary technology specialists are meeting at least once a month, so they can do that, share best practices. We had, I think, 25 teachers trained by Apple last year on a lot of different tools to use, and then those, those are trained, the trainer model, so that they then came back into the classrooms to help staff. So we are using that model. We're trying to build more after-school, we have professional growth courses to get more, a greater array of classes offered, that it can be a five-week course or a 10-week course. I think particularly for the elementary, the secret's going to rest in those three tech specialists sharing best practices and bringing them back to their schools.
Well, I guess to kind of piggyback on what Kim is saying, I mean, you know, obviously we've got this new evaluation tool coming online, and so we're gonna be able to kind of see what's working and where it's not working. And, you know, potentially this could be a good opportunity to use, you know, one of these resources, like a really great teacher in the classroom, maybe in like a PLC setting?
Absolutely. That's absolutely what's underway.
Okay.
It's interesting, because one thing that came up at the end of the technology meeting is one of the tech specialists from the elementary schools came up and said, we should be collecting data on this, we should be showing the difference that it's making to use technology. So she's going to help spearhead that, so that we can begin to prove that student achievement's rising through the use of technology. So.
Well, that's good. Janet?
Jim, I can speak to your questions in terms of the middle school level, because that's where my youngest are now, in terms of how it's helping their education. I know that they are, both middle schools are using the Discovery Ed program for science. And what I learned from their teachers at back-to-school night is that not only can they assign the lesson, but for those children who learn by watching a video instead of reading, they embed video, the reading assignment can be assigned at different reading levels. So a child doesn't know that, you know, they're assigned Level A and their friend is assigned Level B or something like that. So it's at an appropriate level for that particular student. I know they're do, I know my boys did assessments, you know, prior to a unit, so that the teacher could assess where they were, so that they're not duplicating information. If all of the students were at a particular level, they could move forward. So at least for science in the middle school, that's what I'm seeing in terms of that differentiation, which seems to be helpful.
That's fair. I think that's good input. Again, I'm not questioning that technology's good, but, you know, you see disparities throughout the world in how it's utilized, and education throughout the world is actually, in many cases, equal to that within the US. So you kind of question whether what we're doing is the right thing or not.
No, absolutely. And I think that, you know, it's a method to provide differentiation, to meet all students wherever they are.
Right, that's fair. That's fair. So just as a point here, I brought up an issue, with data shows there's an issue, you know, at least an issue, I'll qualify, it may not have significant impact, but I'd like to come back on this in a little bit and understand what, if anything, we're gonna do about it.
Oh, we will.
Right?
As already mentioned, the principal to look into LEAF grants, the next data I want to collect is how many of those cards came from LEAF, how many came from the district, how many came from PTO funds, because we'll have a better sense then to of what is equitable.
That's all right. Because, you know, what Janet says is right. I mean, people, they are teaching differently, things are improving in certain areas, you know, we'll see long-term what happens, but what it says is we should not have an equity within different schools.
I agree.
I have a quick question for you.
Sure, Jim.
Under Long Meadow High School U List one-to-one program, is that, is that, is the ratio currently one-to-one, or is that the goal?
We had a hard time getting a number on that, because they had computers they brought with them from the old facility as well as all the new. It's very close to it.
All right.
And when you take a look at the labs and everything else, I think it's close to that. But I put the one-to-one because I know that's where we're headed. But we'll see, it's going to be the older equipment that will be able to redistribute, because something that was given by the MSBA, we can't move.
Right.
But something that was purchased by the district earlier, we can move that, so.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Any other questions on technology?
It's an interesting discussion though, so.
Okay.
All right. The school committee, school building committee met last week and discussed several things. The MDF room is making substantial progress. The MDF room is where all the computer servers and brains are stored, and it has been overheating. It should be around 70 degrees. It's been operating in the 78-degree range. Jim's been very involved in this, and we're very lucky to have his expertise, because it really, there's a team of engineers that's been telling us the way it's set up is okay, and it's not.
What is the MDF? What does MDF mean?
It's main data facility or something like that. It's the main data facility.
I just noticed the head and room.
Okay. We use codes, and the audience isn't gonna be able to follow it.
No, it's a server room. Basically, it's a computer, it's a server room.
Is it the one connected to Long Meadow Community Television?
No, it's the one that's, it has the, the IDF room, which is right over here, that's another data facility, it's right pointing, within this, right across the hall if I'm pointing in the right way. But this is the one that keeps all of the data, all of the school and town records and information on it.
The assessors' records.
So it's like, it's a big deal room.
Very big deal.
And it's in the basement, or thereabouts basement of this building, that building over there, Building B or something.
And we keep the town records here?
Yeah, yeah.
We do have them backed up.
Share facility, it is backed up every night.
Yep.
But it's not, it is not currently backed up in East Long Meadow, which is ultimately the plan, it's gonna be backed up every night with East Long Meadow, but that's not there yet. So it's backed up within hardware, within the same room, which is a, in my opinion only, it's not a good situation. You don't usually back up stuff within the same room because of fires, floods, things like that, that can happen and ruin everything. So, but that's gonna be fixed. The real issue has been of the overheating situation. As of last week, we had concurrence with the contractor and folks that they're gonna move the air conditioner as well as add, and get that under control. Marie had asked that a couple of additional air conditioning units be put in, so those were put in just as initial backup. Initially, they were like literally from Home Depot kind of things, right, to provide some cooling, while a redundant system gets in place. So we'll see.
Didn't they also have to do that for Long Meadow Community Television, their control room? Go ahead.
I have not heard of that overheating at all. I think the size of this facility is in the IDF room, along with where it's located, because it's not down near the boiler area and stuff like that, provides additional cooling, so it's easier to cool that room.
Okay. I thought they asked for additional air conditioning at our last meeting.
They did. That's the MDF room.
But it's for the MDF room?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So the MDF room got those two portable air conditioners, and the temperature's down to 71. They, in the meantime, have tested the air conditioner that's built in, and that is giving off a temperature of 45, which means it's cooling the way it should. So clearly, there's just not enough.
Cooling capacity.
Cooling capacity. As Jim and Kevin like to say, it should be five tons, and we only have 1.8 tons. So I'm learning a lot about MDF rooms.
Well, just to make sure, in case anybody's listening, what we're saying is, is we believe that the air conditioner should have at least a three-ton capacity. My put was maybe four, if you go worst case. It's currently two, just not to teach everybody how air conditioning, but you can, you can have an air conditioner pump out zero-degree air if you wanted, but if it's not pumping out enough capacity, it won't keep this room cool enough, right, because you have too much heat for it to absorb. So you need enough airflow out and capacity circulating that actually brings the room down in temperature. So there's a two-ton unit in there, we added two additional units per your direction with, I wish I could remember the gentleman's name, but he put it, Tony, yeah, he put it in. Now it's cool. So now the issue is, you don't really want to run a high-tech server area with Home Depot air conditioners, right? So you've gotta go get a facility back in place and fixed that takes care of that. So at least we have something that temporarily is in place, so we can prevent failure, while we do the maintenance, which is gonna happen October 3rd or 4th, I think, switching the air conditioner over in its location. And then we can use data, I use the word data a lot, because that's really what you need, to actually decide what's the right thing to do. You know, it's been a lot of work. So I think we're getting there. We are getting there, but it's been difficult. But people are engaged, they understand the problem, and hopefully we'll get it fixed in the next few weeks.
It's been a great team effort, but if it weren't for Kevin and Jim, we could've been in a serious problem, because we already lost three units before that burnt out, so it could've really been quite serious. So we're making progress. Kelly, could you see if you could call up the growth models for the new MCAS scores? I think I'm gonna get to that later. Yeah, if you put that on. The surge tank is also an issue. The surge tank was anticipated to cost anywhere between $100,000 down to about $12,000 to repair. They had to go out to bid, so the new bid came in at $28,000. As they've done work in the cavity where the surge tank is, they do not believe the surge tank is leaking. So what they're looking to do, they're bringing in another engineer, and if they can fix this, they're going to wrap plastic around it, some type of insulation, and they think that that might be, that might be all they have to do to solve that problem. So we'll know more once the engineer comes in. But that's been the bane of the building committee's existence for quite some time.
May I ask, what is a surge tank?
It is a piece of the pool.
Oh, okay.
It's where the water that flows out of the pool goes.
Overflow.
Overflow.
Pool overflow. Think of it as, you have surge tanks and stuff in your house, and if you have a boiler system, and actually you have an expansion tank, which acts somewhat similar to a surge tank in this case. It basically takes additional water out.
The surge is caused by people jumping into the pool.
Yeah, so you take the water out.
So bodies go into the pool, the water's gotta go someplace.
Right. And then it comes back out.
It's flooding the tank.
And then it gets pumped out.
Gets pumped back into the pool, correct?
Right.
That way, we're not.
No, you're right.
Paying for new water to replace it.
You're right.
Mm-hmm. And somewhere.
That's why you have a surge tank instead of a sewer pipe.
Right.
Very true.
Very good.
Got it.
Okay.
Are you playing with a button or something?
We can move to that for a sec, so it's not a distraction. Let me talk about the MCAS for a sec.
Do you know how I?
You're fine, like.
She's doing it from the computer.
The punch list came back, I'll just finish this up while it's loading. The punch list was a huge issue, because we had the 22 pages, and Jim asked for them to give us a breakdown on the dates that everything will be done. And so therefore, we got that list, so that we're going, we hopefully will make our target of November 1st. Okay. The MCAS scores, we're going to analyze in a lot more detail for you, but I want to show you a couple of things. And this is, this is always fun to explain. There are four quadrants on this. The quadrant where you want to end up is the top right. If you're in the top right, it means that you have high growth and high achievement. If you end up on the bottom, you're not getting the growth that you want or the achievement. It's, if you take the bubble that's up to the top, that's Long Meadow High School. The problem is, they've had such high achievement, they can't make it over to the right anymore because they can't, this model is based upon improving scores every single year. So when you see that bubble move to the right or the left, either students are not performing as well, or they're performing better than they did last year. So again, the upper right-hand quadrant, we want to see the bubbles in, because it's higher growth, higher achievement. So in this case, the number of students proficient are higher, you can tell that by looking at the axis here, and then you look at the median student growth axis, that gives you the median of all the students in the grade. So this, this is, is this all of them?
Yeah.
Kelly, all ELA?
This is ELA all, yes.
Okay. I'm going to start you off with grade three ELA, oh, four, I'm sorry, you need one year to get the growth. This is probably the area that we're going to focus on, because you can see that we have, we have low growth and lower achievement for some of the schools. And if you touch the bubble, it will give you the school. So there's Center who's dead in the middle. We want to see much higher growth there, and we want to see greater achievement. If you go down to the lower bubble, that's Wolf Swamp, and so Wolf Swamp is still not making the progress we'd like to see. They're below, they're below what the median is, and they're also, they don't have as many students proficient or higher as we'd like to see. Blueberry had a good leap this year, and in their fourth grade, you can see that they're moving over into that area that we'd like to see where there's higher growth and higher achievement. Okay? And now for math in grade four.
Can you stop for a second?
Sure.
These are, those bubble sizes are, look like they're saying less than 100 students.
Yes.
Is, when we look at the population, you just talked about, that was for the entire school, I'm assuming, right?
Yes.
So, so...
So this is just fourth grade?
Just fourth grade, right? So however many students are in just fourth grade. Okay.
Twenty each class, three classes?
Sixty.
So Blueberry has seventy-four students included, and they're testing.
All right, just trying to understand the numbers. Thanks.
Okay. So here we go with the math. And the math is, is moving over so that the mean is better, that they, they're getting higher scores, but their, their growth, they're not improving year to year. So that we need to look at that to see what's happening in the math. So, grade four, as you begin to look at some of the other grades, you're going to see that the other grades are having better results. We have to look to see, we need to do an item analysis, go back to the entire MCAS, look to see where they made errors, because there could be trends, it could be geometry, it could be division, and identify what those are. Because we have to go back and see, is it the alignment of the curriculum? Is it the way that we're teaching? Are we not giving enough support? But there's something happening in math and ELA in, in, in fourth grade.
Marie, if, this is, this seems to be a statewide problem, though.
Yes.
So it's not, not to say that we, we don't need to address it, but it seems that every district across the straight, the state in grade four has this, like, sort of blip of lower scores.
The fourth grade is the most difficult test. And I'll tell you, one year as a principal, I compared the fourth grade test to the eighth grade test. The fourth grade was harder, the literacy pieces that they picked and everything. So I think you're right. That's something else to, to note that's, that's here. What I do, when I look at that, that data, because I know it's a harder test, I look to see how they fared with other communities like themselves, as well as those in the state, and I still think they could've performed a little bit better. I think our kids are capable of that, but something needs to be tweaked.
Well, can I ask, how could the fourth grade test be harder than the eighth grade test?
Because the tests were never calibrated. They had a fourth grade committee that made the MCAS test, and then they had an eighth grade committee. They never looked at each other's test, they never talked, they never had curriculum that was rising. So they were never calibrated, any of the tests. It's a major flaw of the MCAS.
I guess, I guess my, my only question is that, you know, for like the last three years that I've sat through MCAS reporting, I know this is not the full report, we've seen that fourth grade is consistently lower. And every year, we've said, we gotta get at the bottom of this.
Uh-huh.
Why aren't we at the bottom of this yet?
Well, we've switched the program.
Right.
So we have new literacy training going on, and when you are training, you do sense to see a little bit of a stagnation, or even a slight drop, because the teachers are learning how to teach a new way. So that's not to be expected. But we still need to really analyze to see, is it the new program? Is the new program working? Is it gaps in the curriculum? And when we get into that item-by-item analysis, we can give you a lot more definitive answers.
And just, just for, I guess, the community's benefit, in the last three years, we've gone from Bass, or we've gone from GMAD to Bass to, you know, to Ames Web, so...
Right. We're still using Bass, though, right? Yes.
But I, I actually support you, Michael. I think, I think, at least in the last three years I've been through here, I think, I've asked the same question, why fourth grade? Why fourth grade? And actually, another question is why the differences between our schools all the time, right? And we have yet to actually get a good understanding or answer, whichever way you wanna say that, against those two questions. Why fourth grade all the time? And why the difference, or what we're doing, the differences between our schools? Because Blueberry, Wolf Swamp, and Center are always different.
You have a small cohort of students to begin with. So the smaller the cohort, if one or two students are off, it really throws the scores, it fluctuates greatly. But this is actually closer, Jim, than it has been, because you're right, there was a great deal of disparity when I looked at these in the past, is, is what we're seeing this year. But they should be performing equally, to the best of our ability.
Kim?
To answer your question, Jim, not any kind of analysis that I've done or anything, just being in part of Blueberry, a lot of those parents are supplementing. So I, I'm gonna say that you've probably got a higher percentage of kids at Blueberry that are in after-school tutors or something, to prepare them for those things versus maybe some of the others. Because...
Well, I mean, it's, it's an interesting, I, I think, again, Kim, my, my question really has been around, where's the data would support? You, you may be absolutely right, by the way. It's, it's just a question of why. I, I really, I don't have any children in young, in early grades anymore, but I'm really hot on this issue. I have, I started this committee of, a kid, a child, whichever way you wanna say that, going to one school to the other school, and our town should have the same education, and they're not getting it.
And I'm wondering, do all the, I, I saw those scores yes, yesterday when they came, or last week when they came out. My first question was, why, do, do all the fourth grade teachers in Long Meadow School System, all three schools, have the same exact curriculum that they're supposed to be following? I know, like, when my son was in second grade last year, I could tell all three teacher, all the teachers in second grade were doing the same thing, because my son was doing the same thing. Every other kid was doing it in second grade. Is that the case in fourth grade, that if we were to go from fourth grade in Blueberry, are they doing the same thing at Center and the same thing at Wolf Swamp? I know that last year at Center, at the end of the school year, one of the teachers was doing multiplication. I don't know that I saw any teachers at Blueberry. So like, I don't know how that stuff works.
We just walked through all the fourth grades.
Right.
So we've been to every school to every fourth grade. Within the same school, you see different things being done.
Yeah.
So that's one thing that, that the administrative team talked about, is why are we seeing such differences in each of the classes, even at the same school? It, it's again, who's using Scotts-Fordman and who's using Investigations, because we adopted a new program, and some people still are not using the new program. So we have some specific data that we are coming out with through these walkthroughs that we will be talking to the staff about.
My, my request, then, I guess, and Michael, maybe you put on an agenda, is we actually gotta come back and talk very specifics around that, because this is, this truly has been the third year we've talked about this, without getting to the root of an action plan that says this is what, this, this is how it's gonna solve the problem. And if you believe there's a problem, which, so you have to kinda get there first. But it, but if you, if you at least agree with me that we shouldn't have this disparity, then we oughta be doing something to fix it.
Yeah, we have, we have some phenomenal teachers in the fourth grade, so I think an action plan would look good. We're talking about using Ames Web, which is a computer-based program that Kelly did some great training on the other day, which gives you instantaneous feedback. The kids take the test, it's on the computer, so you can get that data, so that I think we'll have more real-time data that can help us in seeing what's going on. But we will, we will come up with an action plan.
Can I, I just have one last thing. Fourth grade is like a tough year. It just, I mean, it seems kind of crazy to say, but the, there's a huge jump for kids in fourth grade, that it, you know, the kind of stuff that they, that they're being asked to learn and do is, it's just sort of leaps and bounds in, are made in fourth grade. So I think that may have something to do with it. But also, when we're talking about, I think that the schools need to be equal to each other, absolutely. But we're not dealing with like one-size-fits-all, like little white box kids that fit on a shelf. If we teach, I think the teachers look at the kids' interests and their weakness and their strength, and they teach around those and create activities to suit them.
Uh-huh.
That, you know, I'd be worried if we went and had, you know, heard the same stuff coming from every classroom. It should be all, you know, I guess, the same, you know, the same possibilities presented, but, you know, really let some of your students' interests guide where you're gonna go with it.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you. How, my disagreement would come in, in the statistics of numbers, right? So any individual student would be, I'd be agreeing with. When you put twenty, thirty, forty students together, and you start aggregating those, those statistics against another twenty, thirty, forty, they should, they should come very close together. Any individual student, piece, they can be different, because, but in aggregate, the statistics would say they should come together. And, and these numbers have been different for years now. But, you know, and we just haven't gotten to the bottom of it.
But do we have a big enough pool being tested to, like, you know, like, where we have a couple kids who don't do well on the test, they, they throw it off because we're dealing with such small numbers? Kelly?
I think that, you know, the, the reality is, I think Marie this year has launched what I think is gonna really make a difference in both regards. I think the launch of, of the real structured approach to RTI this year, you know, Marie's goal is to bring a guaranteed universal curriculum at all grade levels. But at the same time, the RTI construct is all about meeting kids where they are and meeting their individualized needs. So that, that component of RTI is about personalization, and that's where we look at for those small populations that have very distinct needs. We address that in addition to providing that guaranteed curriculum. And that's, in RTI, what we would call Tier One. And that's the work that Marie referred to earlier, that we're, we're beginning in literacy. And I think the, the foundation that we're building upon is the work with Leslie, the work with assessments like Bass that really help us determine exactly where every single child is. So that's data that we have from last year, and that data that's really gonna help us build that RTI structure. And that work's already underway. So I think that's, that is really the key in terms of speaking to the equity issue, but also the need to differentiate for kids who are advanced and need something more, and for kids who are at risk and need something more, and for kids who are stagnating in the middle and not showing a growth pattern that we know they can, they can show us. So I think the core of the plan is, is this RTI implementation that Marie's begun this year. And part of what we need to do is provide the differentiated training to our teachers who are in the classrooms, working at these different schools, with the tools that, that they have in their classrooms at their fingertips. So I think you'll hear a lot about the plans as, as they unfold this year, a lot about the data that we uncover, as we really drill down into the differentiated needs of all of our kids.
We do know it's the high needs groups that are causing the scores to go down.
Well, you could separate, without names, right, you can separate out data around people like that. I, I really, we oughta come back with some data, real data around the population and understand it, because this is a very similar conversation that we had actually with Michael Solomon. I mean, so we oughta, we oughta just dig at it a bit and understand it.
What, what kind of data are you looking for?
Well, I would look for something, first of all, I had to look at it more myself. But when you take a look at dots like this, and really, if you wanna talk about population variation, you could actually look at, you could aggregate this entire population together and say, where are you? And then look at the outliers, if you want. Not by name, just outliers. If you're people who are...
Yeah.
Well, and so are we more center-based? Do we, I mean, what is variation around our population? Is it widespread? Is it shifting? And you could do the same, then, once you aggregate it all, compare Center to, since we're talking fourth grade, right, Center to Wolf Swamp to Blueberry, and say, how do they compare with each other? And if, if the center mass of one is farther to the right upper on this curve than the other, and, and you're separating these people out, there's something else going on. And, and we, and when it, the data won't lie. It'll tell you, hey, there's something else going on. What it is can be, and then, by the way, I'm not picking on any teachers, anybody out there, I'm not picking on any teachers. It, it's a matter of the process, the tools, what really is happening within that school. And, and the principals, then, ought to be held accountable for, look at what the data's telling us, and what are you doing about it?
Right.
Right? And we've had this same conversation three times. And, and I've heard about the changing scores and the changing piece. I, I agree, data can shift. But the dots, if you actually compare what the data's told you all three times, it says the same thing. Schools are not equal.
Can I make the suggestion that we move along from this for tonight, knowing that Marie and Kelly are gonna be coming back with a much more in-depth report on this?
Could I just show you the last slide so that we don't...
Sure, I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm just telling you, you know...
Right, no, and I agree with you.
Use the data and dig into it, and you can get into it.
I hear you. Can we go to the, again, to the all in ELA and all in...
So again, while we're struggling, you see that the other, the other classes pull us up. We're still overall making great growth, and we're still showing great improvement. Now, we have to delve in to see why certain grades and certain classes didn't do as well. But I want, I want us to keep this in mind. The district is moving forward. Now, can we take a look at the math? And the math's even better. So we're, we're on an upward trend there. You again have the high school that's way up. They can't, they can't move much further to the right because they can't grow anymore. They're, they're almost, it's, the math, for example, seventy-five percent advanced in high school math. So things are going well, and I just want us, ending on that note. It's a systemic effort, but we will delve down and we will do our best to see what, what's happening in the lower grades.
I think we're doing well, Marie. That's, you know, just understanding the perspective, right? I, I think the school overall is doing well. We've got a few data points that have told us there's issues three times in a row now, and we oughta be doing something about it. That's, that's my point.
And I think, I think we share your concern about the data, and that's one reason Marie mentioned the Ames Web implementation, which is national aggregate data that will help us do exactly what you're describing, which is really look at the, dig deep into the data and find out, not only where our kids are, but to predict where our kids are gonna fall in comprehensive testing like MCAS. I think that data will be really insightful in terms of providing you with the information, providing our teachers with the information that we need to really understand the roots of some of the problems that we see.
Sure. Let's see what we do.
Can I ask really quick, how that, that AIM test, how long does that process take? Like, is that gonna take a year for us to analyze? And is that, that's...
The Ames, Ames Web tool is a universal screening, so it's meant to be a very quick tool. Marie mentioned that it's delivered in conjunction with an online database. On, Ames Web is an online system, used nationwide, so there are hundreds of thousands of data points. Once we enter the data, the analytics are run instantaneously to tell the teachers what predictive results they can see down the road, which children are at risk, which children need intervention right away, and what level of intervention. So it's, it's very robust in terms of the analytics, and the analytics are instantaneous. So there's no waiting period. It's meant to be a tool where you administer, and then you immediately provide instruction or intervention as a result. So I think that's, that's gonna be very different from assessments like MCAS, where the, the teachers are no longer with those children this year. This is a test we took last year. So it's not very helpful in terms of how we can address the needs of kids that are in front of us. Ames Web is a tool that you can sit beside a child, administer the assessment, see the analytics, and make instructional decisions on the spot. So I think that's gonna be a very different kind of assessment that will be very helpful for our educators.
Jim?
And, well, I don't disagree with any of the discussion that's gone on about delving deeper into it. I think one thing that we need to remember is that over the last three years, the teachers have been given changes in how ELA is taught, how math is being taught, how assessments are being done. And they're not only changing from what they had four years ago, but in some cases, those are changing year to year to year. So I, I think that we need to keep that in mind, too. While I totally agree that, you know, education throughout the district should be equitable, to realize that our teachers, you know, have been making a lot of changes, and you may not see those results right away. But, you know, and look, I agree that there needs to be further investigation of the data, but to know that our teachers are constantly adapting. I know lots of changes are happening.
Well, and I agree with that. And actually, I was sitting in Marie's office today, and I said, you know, we focused so much in the last three years on K through two, that, you know, these kids, probably if they took MCAS, are only in the third grade cohort and haven't taken the fourth grade MCAS yet. So, I mean, we're not gonna know if our investment has paid off just, just yet, but it is important to kinda get at, you know, the kids that have taken this last year, you know, what, what is the issue? So...
And we see they're catching up in middle school, but that's no excuse that they, that we can't be performing that well in, in all the grades. So, all right, back to the report.
One last question on MCAS. Is this the last year?
That's the last question on MCAS.
Yes. Is this the last year for the MCAS test?
The park should come in next year. There are national and state debates on whether or not it's going to happen. Mitchell Chester is the chair of the Park Assessment Committee, so everyone feels like Massachusetts will change, because that's, that's certainly his bailiwick. But there is some opposition to, to starting this too soon. So, but yes, according to Mitchell Chester, yes, it's coming in next year.
What's a bailiwick?
It's his personal thing.
Speaking of church.
Staff development, we talked about Ames Web, so we can move on from that. Communication, my blog is up and running. I'm trying to add more to it, so please do take a look from time to time, see what's happening. We've also worked with reporters on the dedication ceremony, opening of school, and more. Glenn Brook, Channel Forty, I sent out a message to all the administrators, that Channel Forty was looking to highlight school events, and Glenn Brook was on the other day. So we're trying to keep our focus on communication as school committee asked me to. The walkthroughs continue. This is really what's going to give us firsthand information about what's happening in classes, as well as using Ames Web and other tools. The RTTT grant that we talked about engaging Holyoke in, unfortunately, will not go through because we did not fit all the criteria. We had a wonderful meeting with the Holyoke administration. We're optimistic that we will be able to join together for some kind of our grant as the year progresses.
And what's RTTT?
Race to the Top.
Race to the Top.
Chief Siano and I met to talk about the dilemma with the traffic. We agreed to put Pam Chaplin down by the Williams and Grassy Gator Corner. I think that has helped. We've moved some bodies around inside the circle, so I think that we're doing a better job of moving the traffic. We also went through safety precautions for the dedication ceremony. You'll be hearing from children about fire drills and lockdowns. This is the time of year that we do it. These practices are critical, because in the case of emergency, students need to know what to do and remain calm. Whitsons, they said that sales were up last week. They went from selling twenty-eight lunches at one school to fifty-five within a week, so that was a good turnaround.
Per day? Right, twenty meals per day?
Per day, I'm sorry.
Okay, speaking of church.
Twenty-eight on Monday, fifty-five by Friday. Okay. So that they saw an increase there. I'm hearing the food is good. Nothing exciting. Joseph, any reports from your end?
Actually, after we had our last meeting, I, I tried the lunch a couple days in a row, and I was extremely impressed. The, the... The, the chicken, the, the chicken burritos, which were very good, I actually have had nachos twice this week. And every Thursday at the high school, we actually do, a special guest chef, and I was, I was shocked when I saw this, I walked in, and, um, they have, uh, this week they had a ramen noodle bar, and, uh, people were loving it, and I was, I was extremely impressed by what I saw.
And that's, the ramen noodle bar was the day he said that interest surged, so...
Yeah, I guess that's going to be, uh, every single Thursday, they're going to have a different guest chef coming in and making a special meal, so...
Very cool.
Everyone's very excited about it.
Excellent, I'm glad we have the same report.
Don't pat ourselves on the back.
We talked about MCAS, um, the park pilots this year, so I wrote down for you who's, who's going to have to pilot it. Four of our six schools were chosen, even though I think they were only choosing a hundred and twenty-two schools, somehow we got selected. Blueberry is going to take the paper test, and only during the mid-year. You've got Wolf Swamp, who has two fourth grade classes and two fifth grade classes picked, and they're online testing. Williams Middle School will have two eighth grade classes in ELA, and they get both the mid-year and the end of the year. And Long Meadow High School has four eleventh grade classes, and they're doing the end of the year online. Marie, is this, the schools that were chosen, do they get sort of opted out then of the MCAS? They can, and we're going to discuss that, we had that discussion because we're trying to track the data, and if we don't have it, but if they're going to the park next year, it won't matter anyway.
That's a lot of time testing, too.
It's a lot of time, yeah, it's a lot of time.
To clarify, then, the ones who aren't taking this park will take the MCAS?
Yes.
Liz.
Okay, but we won't, my point, though, and the previous question I asked, was, how are we going to be able to compare this year's with next year's if only half are, well...
Exactly.
Okay, we're not going to be able to.
It's the DEFC.
Okay.
I hear you.
My question is, do, do all grades take the park, or just like the MCAS where it was like fourth, fifth, or third, fourth, fifth?
When it comes in, right? When it's here permanently?
Right.
Yeah, all grades will take it.
Every year?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I think it'll be third up again.
All grades, or just the same grades that MCAS?
The same grades, grade three through grade ten.
Oh, okay, because they're taking, you said here they're taking eleventh grade.
Oh, so they're adding eleventh, you're right. Are they adding grade twelve, do you know?
I don't think it's finalized yet, I think their pilot, it's part of the reason why they want to pilot it, that they're offering a no because they, with the park, because part of it's performance-based, so if you don't pass the park test when it's operational, um, you know, it could be that you're taking it as a junior or senior, so the pilots may pertain to, to that element of it. But we don't have any data, any final decisions on that yet.
It's also a shame because they're only taking, for example, two classes at, at, at third grade, and there may be four classes, so it's not even giving us information on a whole grade level, it's just, it's just a sampling, so... And that's it.
Your longest report ever.
It was a good, good discussion.
It was a great discussion. Um, for my update, I spent a lot of time, along with Kim and Katie, working, and Marie, working on getting the dedication ceremony good and ready for, for Saturday. A lot of work has gone into it, and I think Diane needs a special thank you for all of her work because Diane has pretty much remembered everything we didn't, and that was a lot. That was a lot, um... So, you know, thank you.
And don't forget Kim King.
I already mentioned Kim, yes.
Amazing what Kim's done.
Are we going to recognize the LHS yes group, or the yes group?
Yes.
Because there were several individuals.
Beth Baron is speaking, she's on the speaking program.
Joe Aberdell?
Joe Aberdell's going to be taking photographs, um...
Okay.
But Beth Baron is going to be the...
There are a lot of people on that committee, but there were some people who are kind of key leaders, and, okay.
Yeah, Lancer Pride all received invitations, and they do have a representative speaking.
Fine.
Okay. And other than that, I attended the Center School Carnival on Friday. I saw Liz's son go in the dunk tank, as well as some of our teachers, one of whom went in fully clothed and then decided to come and give me a big wet hug after, probably because I pulled the lever on her a couple times.
So we could have come and pulled the lever on you?
Donna asked me if I would get in, and I told her no. But it was actually, it was a great day, and I understand, I mean, Katie's son ran a booth, the entire fifth grade, everybody ran a booth, a great fundraiser for, for Center School. Uh, so that was a really great thing to see, and then I went over to the football game after. So I had a full Friday night in Long Meadow. Other than that, that's pretty much it. I have been invited to go speak to Ms., Ms. Lynn Doyle's class at Center School in a couple weeks about town government, so that'll be fun. And that's about it, spending my days here, working on this dedication. Joseph?
We discussed before, I did, I tried the lunches a couple more times, and I was extremely impressed, I just wanted to echo that.
Joseph, are more high school students buying the lunch?
I have noticed an increase from last year. When we had our first meeting, I, I hadn't really noticed anything, I think that was because not many people knew that there was a brand, uh, a new system. I would say everyone really knows now, and across the board, everyone's very impressed.
Did you brown bag it today?
I'll be sure to do that. I wanted to, I wanted to congratulate, um, the, the, Charlie, uh, the freshman class officers have been elected president Charlie Lee, vice president Chris Campbell, treasurer Jordan Kay, and secretary Alex Sepleck, they've all been elected by their class, and I'm sure they'll do a great job this year. All the students have received their Gmail accounts to comply with the new social media policy. As the vice president, as a class officer, I was one of the first to receive it, and I, uh, working with my group, I found it extremely useful, and we can actually search by name anyone in the entire public school district. So, like, we've been able to contact teachers with that, we probably wouldn't have been able to guess their emails before. So I think, and people are using them, we actually used it to conduct a poll of the, the, the junior, senior classes, and it was very efficient because we had no more paper, we just did a Google form, and it was very quick. I was able to get, uh, uh, results ready in like an hour. Yeah, and so that, that transition, it went very smoothly, um, haven't heard really any complaints about it, and everyone, uh, so everyone really are using it, I find it very efficient. I wanted to talk, uh, just for a moment about the parking situation, and I, I just had, I would like to ask the board if there's anything being done about the current parking situation, uh, the, not parking, but, uh, the traffic situation in the mornings for drop-off. It's, uh, a lot, multiple staff members have talked to me about how they find it, that there could be room for improvement before the contract release in November. And I was asked to find out if there was any plans to change this current layout of how students are dropped off in the morning at the high school.
There will be another driveway open, they're working on it over on my side of the building, over here.
Where will that go to?
That'll, you'll be able to get into student parking lot.
Oh, okay.
So that should alleviate some of it, and it'll mean there's another exit. So we're really hoping that will, um, really make the flow a lot easier.
I think that will really help, because I, I think the problem stems from everyone going in the same entrance, so once that's open, I think you'll see a resolution.
Right.
And I know last meeting, we talked about adding, uh, I, how I would like to look into adding an AP class to the business department. I'm currently working with the guidance department to get approval to do a poll of the, the class, I mean, of the, the student body, to find out if there's interest in that. And I was also hoping to not only poll the high school, but also parts of the middle school, see if there'll be upcoming interest in, uh, for you, so that will probably be prepared for the next meeting. And other than that, I'll take any questions, but that's my...
John?
Of course, yeah. That's an AP Business Economics course?
Yeah, what I've been discussing with, uh, Mr. Flannigan, chairman of the business department, is doing a, adding a course would probably be slated towards seniors, that would be AP Economics. It would comply, students would be allowed to, encouraged to take the AP course at, at the end of the year, and they'd be able to get college credit for that. He called...
If I could, though, just so I could be clear on it, is this an AP Economics course?
Yes.
Or an AP Business Economics?
Uh, AP Economics course, is what we're discussing.
You'd look at different models of different economies...
Exactly.
Around the world?
Yes.
Including our own? Such as it is? Okay.
And he's, uh, he's called some, uh, some of his former colleagues that have, currently and have taught this course in the past, and he feels optimistic about it, so...
Is there an economics course now in the social studies department?
Uh, in the business department, there is an economics course.
Is there one in the social studies?
No.
I think it's micro and macro.
There used to be, again.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. I know that there is one course called Economics in the business department, I don't know, micro or macro?
Could be the one.
Any other questions?
Yeah, not so much for you, Joe, but bringing up the parking, I know, or the traffic situation in the morning. A question that I had, because I know you and I had discussed before about the, having people driving in off of Bliss through the, through this end's driveway. When they come, though, to the intersection where you've got cars circling around the horseshoe, is there concern, or how is that going to be addressed? So people coming in from Bliss are going to be able to cross over the traffic that is leaving...
It's going to be a right turn only, according to Chief Ciano. So when you leave the parking area, you go, when you leave going onto Bliss, you're going to have to turn right during certain hours.
No, but when, if you're coming in off of Bliss, off of your ends to get to student parking...
Right.
You've got to cross over the speed hump, and you've got to make a right-hand turn in the horseshoe, and then an immediate left to get to student parking. So you're now battling the cars coming out who are doing drop-off in the horseshoe. Has that been, has that issue been considered?
We've talked about it, but I think we were also waiting to see what happened when it actually opened. It has been discussed.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure there was a resolution.
I think you're going to have to see how it pans out, I mean, I, I think...
Do you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah.
I, the minute she said it, I thought about that exact situation, and maybe Bliss should only be used for, for exit, I don't know. Not that that helps the situation.
Um, I, I'm no architect, so I apologize for this, but what I've been, um, some ideas that have been suggested to me by some staff members is actually, um, having an additional entrance added to Grassy Gutter. There's actually a construction entrance right next to the main entrance, and perhaps, I don't know what the contractor's planning, but perhaps turning that into a permanent entrance is something that I've just, that's been suggested to me, but, again, I'm no architect. Um, right to the right, if you're looking, if you're standing at the, uh, main entrance of the school, looking at Grassy Gutter, to the right of the main entrance, I believe there's a construction entrance that's been used for some time. And, um, some staff members have told me that they think that it might be a good idea to have a parking lot-only entrance and exit, uh, there, which would alleviate some of the traffic flow of students who park, not having to go in the main entrance, causing that, uh, kind of slow down right at the, you know, right where parents who are dropping off get in. Um, it would be, I, I guess what the, what it would look like, something similar to the actual exit of the main horseshoe, where you have, you know, a right, a left, uh, turn, but also for exit and entry. And that would be for students and faculty to go in who are using the parking lot only. That would relieve some of the pressure.
I, I mean, I think it's worth taking a look at.
Yeah, on this, on this road, though, like, when I came in tonight, there's, there's a Y, okay? If you're heading west on Bliss, can you take the first one?
No, you can't take a left-hand turn there, there's a sign there.
Even though we all do, you're not supposed to.
When, no, I'm, I'm talking, if you're coming down...
You're heading west, you can't turn left?
If you're coming, if you're heading west on Bliss versus heading east on Bliss. If you're heading west on Bliss, can you take... The Y that points north, or do you have to take the Y that points south?
You'd have to take the Y that points south. You'd have to go past the little island and then turn left.
Okay, so that should be marked as an exit only, then, huh? Because I was going to say, one solution, although it collides, literally collides, no pun intended, with the problem that after parents drop their children off, they have to exit. And if we have a flow of cars coming in from Bliss, they're going to have to go through each other.
So I would suggest that, John, that...
Well, an alternative would be to designate the Bliss entrance as an entrance only in the morning and an exit.
Yeah, that's, that's really a building committee discussion.
Okay, well, yeah, but I mean...
You can bring up.
It's stuff that I, I hadn't realized there was a problem, and, because I haven't been there at eight o'clock in the morning, so I haven't seen it.
I know that Bobby's probably watching this, and so this might be a good topic for the Thursday morning meeting, potentially.
For who?
The Bobby Peter and Gil Bane and Omar, or I mean, Gil Bane and Justin Lester get together every Thursday morning and talk about these types of issues, and kind of do like a, a real management meeting. So this might be a good topic for, for them on Thursday, um, you know, I'm sure that can be heard.
The only, the only thing I would add to that, because I would agree with that, is that there, the assumption is, which is not always a good thing, I know, but, uh, but there were traffic studies done as this was laid out.
Yes.
Right? So, so going back to those traffic studies, we can look at what they assumed and what's actually happening, right? So, so, and see if, if folks just made a mistake, or in fact, just because of the construction, that things are happening differently than they will at the end of the day. But that will help lead it. The other thing is, from an entrance point of view, I think at the end of the day, when all said and done, people will be able to go in through the library, actually, in the morning as well. So that's another point of entry into the building without having to go through, you know, Grassy Gutter.
I don't think they want them dropping off students there.
Not right now.
Actually, um, this is...
The drop-off point is only for...
Personally, I'd actually do come in through the library illegally, but, um...
Well...
You are now busted.
I am a mandated reporter.
So, actually, as class office, we hold our meetings in the library, and, um...
It's probably easier.
We, we were, um, my advisor, Mr. Collins, told us that we really should not let students in who are at that door. And I was wondering, I don't know who would make that kind of decision, but if that, was the media center entrance ever planned as any type of, uh, receiving entrance in the mornings?
No, and I think the concern is obviously that when students are entering through the front of the building, you have a good idea of who's coming into the building, versus if there's nobody at the back door...
Yeah.
You don't know who's coming into the building, and so I think there is, so I'm one of the safety issue to it. You know, I feel like, obviously, I think everybody who drives down Grassy Gutter Road, or Williams, or Bliss, acknowledges that this is an issue. And I'm sure that this is functioning as, or at least ideally will be functioning as it designed, as it was designed, but we need to do some management of the situation as well, which I think is kind of the answer we're going to get from, from some people. But, you know, and I know that having Pam Chaplin out there certainly has helped alleviate a little bit. Uh, I am curious to see how it turns out once the construction vehicles leave and everything's kind of back to normal. But, you know, certainly, this is a topic that I think should be addressed while we still have the opportunity to have, like, Gil Bane on site before November first. So I think that, you know, so what I'll do, and I think, you know, or Marie, or we can both do it, is just kind of send a quick message off to Bobby and Peter to see, you know, if this is something that they can talk about Thursday morning, and then kind of have a better idea.
I just have to say, we, we have discussed this over and over and over again, we've had meetings, we've had twenty-five people outside studying it, we've had people on the roof. I think until the construction trucks go, we're just going to have to temporarily live with it. Because we've tried everything, we've tried positioning police, bringing police in, and nothing's alleviating it.
All right, um, also, one thing is that, um, I'm looking at Mafia, the, the site, but the squad, this might be out of date, but, um, so the, the horseshoe, they actually did add a bus queue, which I think was a, a great idea, so buses don't interfere with the flow of traffic. But Mr. Dunkley and Mr. Landers are actually out there in the mornings directing traffic, but, uh, the, the horseshoe itself is quite large, but parents actually stop pretty close to the main entrance, and I think that might be maybe the, the source or the root of the problem, because even though we have this massive horseshoe, a very, very small horseshoe is, is only usable, because if you're in front of the bus queue, there's a fence there, so you actually can't, you can't get out any, without causing a major delay. And most of the, most of the horseshoes actually not being, uh, used for drop-off. So maybe, if we don't want to, if it's, uh, easier, we could look at just a management, like you said, of getting parents to go all the way down to the end of the horseshoe and then stop.
I'll talk to Mr. Dunkley about that, maybe can you head that, down that end, I know at one point he was there.
Right, maybe we should put signs that say, drop your kids off here, drop your kids off here.
Yeah, that might...
I just want to make a suggestion, if you're meeting on Thursday, and I know you guys have talked, what?
Bobby and Peter.
The group is meeting on Thursday, I know that the students have a lot to say about it. Maybe he could gather the information, that he's probably got it written down right now, you could maybe just forward it along to them so they could kind of review it in their meeting, so that we could let them know that we are listening to them as...
Yeah.
I'll send, I'll, I'll...
Yeah, shoot me an email.
Why don't you give it to me?
All right.
I'll shoot it to you.
I'll reach you both.
Building committee.
Is there a crossing guard for pedestrian traffic at Bliss and Grassy Gutter? For the high school student in the morning?
Yes, no, uh, I...
Can you say that again?
Is there a crossing guard for...
Bliss?
At Bliss and Grassy Gutter?
Yes.
Is it, is it at seven thirty, or is it for Blueberry?
Oh, it's for the elementary?
Is it at seven thirty, or is it, well...
There's no, there's no, uh, high school, um, I don't believe there's...
The crossing guard, that's there, shows up over for the elementary?
Correct, yes, and I don't believe there's...
Because I had a parent who was concerned about that, apparently, the, well, it was the phone call about two weeks ago. There is no... There is no crossing guard at all near Burbank. Students cross Burbank. No, not at Burbank, because it's down the road.
There's a crossing guard there.
I think you have to separate out, John, between high school students and middle school and elementary students, because they shift at those different times.
Absolutely.
There's no, there are no crossing guards for high school students.
So the one for Burbank that is, is on top of the one for Grassy Gutter and Bliss.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But, but it's only for elementary.
And middle.
And middle. Hopefully, high school is.
Right, high school doesn't do crossing guards.
I think, I think we're, I don't think, uh, allocation of resources to crossing guards for high school would be appropriate.
Hopefully, they can.
Well, from, well, from experience, I used to take walking field trips and I, I did not let my high school students cross Burbank by themselves, because if cars were whipping around, going down Bliss and then cutting into Burbank, it's a crossover for people who want to get out of town fast. Well, all right, I just.
Good question.
Maybe I'm, I'll, I'll try to talk to Robert Barquette myself, just find out what's going on.
So I will prepare, uh, just some of my ideas and things that I've heard from, and I'll, uh, email.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
Bring it back to building committee.
Excellent. All right, thank you. And that, that's the, that's my report.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Joseph? All right, finance.
I will meet next meeting, October second.
Quickest report so far.
No comments.
No comments. Uh, SBC? So we've heard about the MDF.
We've, we've heard all when you do your, I think, about the, the meetings.
Legislative?
Uh, the great general court is not in session, but, uh, they, they're going to have an informal session Wednesday, and they're going to cancel the tech tax, which would have, if it worked out as they thought it was going to work out, would have brought in a hundred and sixty million dollars to, uh, the Commonwealth. A large portion of that money was earmarked for education as well as transportation. We had Senator Candares and Representative Ash, uh, over at a meeting last Wednesday. And when I asked them, since we're going to lose the tax, they're under pressure from the high-tech people, they're dropping the tax. I asked, well, what are you going to do to make up the revenue? And their reply was, oh, our, uh, revenue, uh, is exceeding our expectations. Well, I got an email today that said it's not, that there is a, there is no way of, of making up a hundred and sixty million. So that's something I'd like to just make the, uh, committee aware of. Something that was passed to produce more revenue is now, is now being canceled. And Senator Candares and Senator, uh, Brian Ash, Representative Ash, are both voting to cut it. And it was, uh, out of a protest from the high-tech community. So, and I just offer that up. From the point of view of education, public education, revenue we thought was going to be there
Right.
isn't going to be there. Now, I don't know what the impact of that down the road will be, but I'm sure it's, it's going to be noticeable. Aside from that, they haven't been doing anything else.
Hopefully, they start doing.
Except going around talking to us about it. What a great job they're doing.
Green.
Trying to be frank.
Okay, um, we met two weeks ago and, um, we just looked at our policy, um, how we can improve it. Um, we're in the process of writing up an email to go to, um, the PTOs to distribute to, uh, parents about, um, to encourage no idling, um, which is a law in Massachusetts and finable. Um, we're also hopefully in the process of getting reusable trays for the high school, since the dishwasher, um, can be used. And, um, we also want to remind teachers, and we'll, um, email them about recycling in the classroom and in their teacher's lunchrooms and, um, for themselves and the students. Any questions?
Sounds like you guys doing law work?
I think so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious about when, uh, the trays are going to start actually happening.
Yeah, I would ask Tom, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask Tom when he gets back. Uh, because I'm sure there's going to be a cost associated with that.
Um, one-time cost to buy them.
Right.
They're, they're not compostables. They're, the hard plastic ones.
Do we have to buy silverware too, or do we have silverware?
Ooh, good point. Well, didn't we have it at one point? We were using silver and plastic trays.
I think we were using plastic silverware.
Years ago. But, um, even, you know, at elementary schools, they use plastics, silverware. So we probably will continue that. I think that might be like a safety issue with silver, silverware.
Right. We use the sporks as long, as long as I can remember.
Right. We won't have any fights with sporks.
No spork fights.
Okay.
Well, we'll, uh, find out next time, I guess. Operation Subcommittee.
Uh, no new news building the team stills.
Okay. Seal.
Um, we had a meeting scheduled last week and had to cancel because of an emergency, but hopefully I'll have an update next week.
Uh.
Can I ask, what is SEAL?
It's the Special Education, um, Parent PAC.
Okay.
It used to be PLACE, now it's called SEAL.
Why did it, well, I don't know.
Well, PLACE dissolved.
Why did they change?
PLACE dissolved like, I guess, two years ago and, you know, we're obviously mandated to have a special education PAC for parents. And so they reorganized last year and, uh, I think it's now the Special Education Association of Long Meadow or something similar. Diane doesn't know either. So it's, this is the new PAC and, so, yeah. Collaborative?
Uh, the Collaborative, uh, Governing Board will be meeting tomorrow. And, uh, I think the Corporation is also meeting tomorrow.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, excuse me, Wednesday. Wednesday, yes.
Great. Uh, Middle School Working Group?
Same situation with building the team. I'll, hopefully, uh, I would expect by next meeting, although I won't be in next meeting, I'll get you a note, um, we should have teams in place and running.
Great. Policy?
Uh, we are busy as well with policy. Um, we finished one policy. Um, and we have another that, um, I think we're good to go. I don't know if you want me to say what they are.
Please.
Okay. Um, we, we, um, updated the bullying policy according to the MAS C with the new guidelines.
Okay.
So that's all set.
So we'll put that on the next agenda.
Right. Um, our emergency CPR plans, we are, um, in the works of finishing that. Um, we have a building use policy that we're looking into and just want to talk to the lawyers about first. Um, oh, and we are also looking and trying to adopt a, um, a food payment policy. And I've spoken with Pat Carrera from MAS C, and they do not have a policy on that. So she's trying to get the National School Committee policy for me. She said it'd take a couple of days, um, to see if there's anything. There, I saw two that might work. And then, um, what was that other one? Oh, and then we, um, came up with a, um, a sexual abuse training policy that we are forming.
Great. So I'm, so just, I guess, for everybody at home, the school lunch, because I know that's probably the one sticks out the most. The school lunch policy that Sub, Policy Subcommittee is going to be discussing comes at the request of Tom Mazza and actually pretty much the request of not only Chartwell's but Whitson's. Uh, and essentially, you know, what happens is that students will have, carry a balance on their account and they will deficit spend on their account. And they can, you know, and we don't have any mechanism in place that really says, well, once they stop, you know, once there's no longer any money in their account, cut them off. Uh, and so we have students that, you know, and usually these deficits get taken care of, but sometimes they do not. Uh, and usually, uh, and we have no way of really collecting that money, uh, except for when they become seniors in high school and we can say, well, we're not going to give you your diploma, uh, until you pay off all of your dues and your debts. Um, so Tom, you know, for the last year and a half, has really been trying to get the school committee's attention on this, on this item, to try to figure out a way to say, you know, you can get a peanut butter sandwich, but we're not giving you a hot lunch, or something very similar. Obviously peanut butter being a allergen. You can get some type of, sun butter.
Or cheese sandwich.
Or a cheese sandwich. So I guess that's kind of what their focus is on, Joseph.
Um, I know, I don't know if this policy is the same with, uh, the other schools, but the high school, you can, uh, I know some students do run up on deficit balance, but you are not allowed to get anything that's considered a snack, um, on that deficit. You're only allowed to get the, the main, the, the main meals.
And it might have been different for Chartwell's, because I know that kids used to get up at like Glenbrook, for instance. There, I had this one story that, uh, our old manager was telling us about, where these kids would just come and just buy like twenty dollars' worth of cookies and just kind of hand them out, which, you know, we have this great wellness, wellness policy in place, but how do you stop kids from just buying twenty cookies, you know, especially when they have money on their account, so.
Refuse to sell them.
I know.
You know, stop selling cigarettes to kids. You just refuse to sell it to them.
Cookies and cigarettes.
I, um, and also the new company that actually I've noticed sells a lot less, uh, unhealthy items than the, of the Chartwell.
Yeah, and part of that, I mean, part of that, I guess, which is also good information for everybody, is that, uh, we have federal laws in place now, the Healthy Hungry Kids Act, or Hunger Free Kids Act, I should say, and the federal food standards really limit what we can sell as far as, uh, as far as snack foods. And this year, they're putting into place sodium limits. And so the state of Massachusetts is a lot more strict than the federal requirement. They eased up a little bit on the protein requirement, uh, last year, because I think last year, you probably remember, everybody was saying, I'm still full, this really isn't enough protein for me.
I'm still hungry.
I'm still hungry. That's what I meant to say. Still hungry. I haven't eaten yet. Uh, so they eased up a little bit on those requirements, but, uh, the, the big challenge is, uh, how do you have this profitable program and yet sell things that probably are not as appealing as, uh, very unhealthy food? But I think we have a good company that's able to offer that solution. Anybody else? All right. So establish a kindergarten committee. Marie?
I would like to get school committee representation, actually, and two committees, a kindergarten committee and a principal search committee for the high school. I'd like to get that going soon. But the kindergarten committee, this came up in dialogues last year and the year before, that perhaps we really should have full-day kindergarten, that some students are disadvantaged because they're not, uh, receiving the same experience as others that can afford to, um, that can afford to pay for full-day kindergarten. So this committee would be examining whether or not we would like to go to a full-day kindergarten program. So I would like to get two reps for that committee.
See Janet and, uh, who wants it more?
Well, three of you want to be on it? Oh, you have a kindergarten? Go ahead.
I have a kindergarten coming.
Oh, so do you want it?
You both can be on it. I mean.
Yeah, we'll do all three of you.
I'd like to be on it.
Okay.
You want to?
Okay.
All right, well, we can only take three.
You got three or four?
I got four with John, so who really wants to do it? Or should I just make the decision for us? All right. So Janet said she wants to be on it.
Do you want?
They raised their hands first.
Well, you looked over there first.
I looked at Janet first.
You weren't looking in an omni-direction.
I can't, I can't, I'm not capable of that.
Well, you should. Well, could we discuss it a little bit?
Sure, definitely.
Is this going to be a mandatory for, uh, full year or? There are some parents out there who would like to see us offer free kindergarten, but some would like to have like a morning session or an afternoon session.
That's what the committee will look at. It will examine every avenue. It will survey parents.
Okay, but right now, we, we offer half-day free. And you're proposing to do full-day free.
I don't think that.
Is that it?
I don't know a school, well, I, I, the school experiences that I've had have been full-day, but, um, you do have to pay whether it's a small amount or a large amount. I don't know what, but I've, um, the few school districts that I've been in the last few years, you've always, you've had to pay.
Okay, but I'd be interested in seeing full-day free with a parent option to opt out, if they want to have them at home.
I've, I've gone.
Safely afternoon.
Yeah, the committee's going to examine all of that?
Well, okay, those are some of the questions I would bring to it.
Okay.
Marie, I think, uh, I would suggest you put a charter in place for the team and, and bring forward, before we elect who's on the committee today, uh, the discussion would be around what, what the actual objective of the committee is and what it would be looking at. Because, um, what people are talking about here, as you just said, there's all different types of permutations you can have here, right? And, and some of which would be benefit, more beneficial than others, and some of which would have a financial impact on a town versus others. I mean, and we ought to, um, understand that. We ought to, we ought to put together what really the expectations coming out of that committee would be and the data that would be expected to be looked at. And, and the different types of, of options, right? The half-day, which is already in place, the full-day paid, the full-day paid versus, you know, full-day, you know, subsidized by the town or paid for by the town, whichever way that means. And actually, even looking at the data of, does a half-day versus full-day make a difference to a student? Because I've seen data that would question that. And, and so we ought to look at all of that and bring it back.
I think the charter is basically, do we want a full-day program? And then you get into details like, how much will it cost? Can we afford to pay for it? Do we have to charge parents? And then there are other options like a partial full-day program. So, but we'll, I'll put that down in writing and, um, bring that back to the committee.
Yeah, so I, I think when you write your charter, I would expect, I would suggest anyway, that, that you define that maybe the outcome is a recommendation on whether, number one, you go forward with a full-day. Number two, part of that would be, is it a paid-for program or a funded program? You know, I mean, and so that, you know, it's a couple-part recommendation. Uh, any case, I'm not going to be on the committee. I'm just going to.
Thanks, Jim, appreciate it.
All right, so what I saw down here was that Kim conceded. And so Katie and John will be your school committee members. So Janet, John, and Katie.
Unless you want to.
No, I just want to go on record saying that I really, um, like, the idea of full-day kindergarten is just having kindergarten come out. So, any help you need at the, on the side, let me know.
Okay.
But go for it.
If I could, part of the problem with this whole kindergarten thing, full-day or, uh, partial, is people who are, who have young children who would qualify for kindergarten feel very strongly about it. And then as soon as the children age a bit.
Right.
It's put on the back burner or that burner shut off completely. So it, I've been hearing about it over the years that I've been on the committee. And it's, it's something that people feel very strongly about when, you know, especially have two or three young ones at the same time. It's a nice break for the mother during the day to put one child in the kindergarten, you know?
Well, you've got Janet, who's going to be on it, who's got no kids near kindergarten. And then you've got one that's getting ready, and she's also a teacher, so I think.
Well, I don't have any kids in kindergarten either.
And I, I'm going to say, and you as well, so I think you've got a good mix of people on your committee.
Okay.
I think, I mean, I think this has been a problem as long as we've offered kindergarten in Long Meadow. So, I, you know, I'm glad we're examining it and I'm looking forward to the outcome, whatever it may be.
That's a pretty safe statement.
I thought so.
Whatever happens.
I tried lightly.
Okay, sarah, sarah.
Well, you don't want to form a thing you don't know. You've got to have some of the back information.
But it is something that, that we, the school committee and the administrators investigated years ago. And I probably still have the report that the person wrote at that time. So there is a report that we've got that you can start with, but it's like ten, twelve years old now, but there is a report.
Okay.
Do that, um, do I have also, here's a, a principal exploratory?
Yes, I'm committee.
I would love, I would like.
You're interested in serving?
I would love to.
Could we, could we discuss that and get a school committee rep for the, um?
Do you want one or two?
I think we want one, because the committee's going to be about fifteen as we try and get off constituents, so.
I'm happy to if you want one.
I'm interested in that too, though.
You can't be on everything, John.
No, I'm not trying to be on everything, but I'm.
Um.
Which one are you more interested?
Yeah, which one are you more interested in?
I am the high school liaison.
Which one is he more interested in?
Which one are you more interested in?
Would you not be there as a high school liaison and not as a school committee member?
Say again?
I said, would you not be there as a high school liaison, not a school committee member?
But as a school committee liaison.
I'm the school committee liaison to the high school.
So does that mean you should do it? Am I?
No, I actually believe, uh, John, which one are you more interested in?
Yeah, which one are you more interested in doing? Kindergarten or principal? Sophie's choice.
High school.
Well, okay, if you want to put it like that. No one else is interested in the high school?
Well, Kim was interested in.
Okay, you want kindergarten, go do kindergarten.
I figured you guys could trade.
Um, so would I also be able to?
This is really long.
I know. Position or is this?
Oh, you're on the committee. Oh, you're on the committee.
Okay.
You're the student rep. This is a school committee member, so you're the school committee student rep on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We're only deciding on one member.
I thought that was fair, rather than going out and asking who's interested in the student body. You, you represent them through your role on this, so.
Could I ask who else is going to be on that?
You probably have.
What other kinds of folks are going to be on that?
Parents, teachers, administrators.
Teachers from the high school?
Principals from different levels, teachers from the high school, leaf representative. There'll be a lot of, I, I have the list in my office, I can show you afterwards.
Now everybody's happy.
Do you know when this, the law, the process is going to be?
In the beginning of October. I'm going to put the committee together now, I want to advertise in October, and I want this wrapped up by January. So, Michael, can we put that in the next agenda? Because they have it all spelled out.
Yep.
People might want to see it.
Get on that note.
Diane, remind me.
When would you, when would the kindergarten committee start meeting?
Okay. So I'll let, I'll let you guys handle that, we'll move, we'll move along.
Okay, well, just for, I'm leaving kindergarten.
Okay.
Let the record reflect that John is only on the principal search.
Not going to kindergarten.
And Kim is on kindergarten committee.
Kim, Katie, and I.
All right, the next thing that I have on the agenda is the MAS C delegate manual. We don't need to vote on this until, I mean, the convention's November sixth, and so basically, take the next two or two weeks, read the resolutions and the appointment, and the recommendations for life members as well as officers. We just need to vote as a committee to authorize Liz, John, and I to vote on these resolutions. Oh, one person.
We only get one vote.
We only get one vote, so me, or my designee, because chance, depending on who wants to go to this.
So you handle it last round.
Yeah. We've done it this way for the last couple of years, as far as I can remember, so please just read it, should be in your packets. I scanned it today, and I don't want to waste any more time on this tonight.
Well, if I could clarify, which resolutions are we talking about?
Uh, I think they're.
There's some under the 2013 legislative action.
Yeah.
And there's some under 2012.
Yeah, 2012 is a.
The minutes of the 2012 annual meeting.
Yeah, 2012 is a review. You want to do a report of the resolutions committee, which begins on page twenty-four and continues on twenty-five and page twenty-six.
Excuse me. So there are a total of six?
I believe so, yes.
Michael, that will be on the agenda to vote on next meeting?
Yeah, so it'll take some time to review it.
Okay.
Especially interesting ones in here. We also are going to be voting on the recommendation for life membership, which begins on page eighteen and ends on page nineteen, and report of the nominating committee, which begins on number twenty-two and ends on page twenty-three. It's like a hotly contested battle for president of MAS C. Okay?
There's one little difficulty here. You've got five resolutions on twenty-four and page twenty-five. Then you've got six listed on twenty-five and twenty-six.
Yeah. The ones that are on twenty-six were ones that were submitted by people other than, for me, oh. Okay, so resolution five.
Same hand school committee, but they're different committees, but.
Well, what, okay, so resolution five actually begins on the bottom of page twenty-five and ends on the bottom, end of page twenty-six, and it is to confirm the actions from 2012. So all of those resolutions listed on page twenty-six are part of resolution number five. It's almost like the preamble to a warrant article.
If you say so.
But you and I can talk about it offline, we don't need to.
Okay.
All right, moving right along. Approval of warrants.
Okay. I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2200 of the General Operating Fund fiscal year 2014, dated 27 September 2013, in the amount of three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and eleven cents.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2201 of the school lunch fund fiscal year 2014, dated 27 September 2013, in the amount of three thousand, six